Premier is here. Premier Heating and Air is offering rebates starting at $1,000 with the purchase of a new heating and air system. Upgrade your system before the summer heat is here. Premier Heating and Air offering free Wi-Fi thermostat included with the purchase of a heating and air system. And now pay just $89 for a system checkup. Experience the premier difference today or log on to dublin.premierishere.com. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company.
This May 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. I'd request for Councilman Mascara to provide the invocation. Please stand for the invocation, remain standing after the invocation for the pledge to the flag. Councilman Mascara.
Please bow your heads. Dear Hymen Father, thank you for all the gifts that you give us. Lord, you are the beginning and end of everything we should say, think, and do. Would I ask that you put your hands of grace and forgiveness over this staff in our community as we make decisions that will better our town? Lord, please bless this meeting and watch over us all. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a makeup meeting from last week when we did not have a quorum. We have a quorum this afternoon, so we will go through the agenda items. And we have a couple of additional items. So at this time, before we begin, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend the agenda and add an additional item concerning transfer of real estate to Dublin City Schools, approximately 65 acres.
.65 acres.
Excuse me. .65. .65 acres located on the corner of Shamrock Drive.
Next to the fire station.
Next to the fire station, yep.
All right. So we have a motion to amend the agenda. We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. That will become item number 12 on the action agenda for council. Now moving to item number one of the agenda, approval of the May 1 city council meeting minutes. You have a copy of the minutes in your packet. Any questions, changes, additions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Smith, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. We'll now move to item number two, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Do we have a motion?
Motion to pay bills.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Smith. We have a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Moving to item number three, we have approval purchases over $15,000. We have two purchases on today's agenda. The first is a truck and the second is some telecom equipment. Mr. Powell, will you provide an explanation of those and then we'll move to vote on those together?
Yes. The first is a 2024 Maverick Super Crew truck for meter reader department in our water utility department. This is to replace one that was involved and totaled in a traffic accident. And the insurance proceeds will mostly cover this purchase. And the next item is a Calix Head end equipment for telecommunications. This is for equipment. There are switches that will be installed at our data center at Altera and the two hubs. Total purchase price is $58,878.10. And there's also an annual support cost of $6,095 per year for a three-year agreement. Staff recommends that you approve both of these purchases.
All right. You have information, additional information regarding these items in your packet. We also discussed that these are supported in our budget. Have any questions for staff related to these items? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Mascara. We have a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is a first reading of an ordinance to approve the FY '26 budget. This budget came through our finance committee. It was drafted by staff with a lot of work from Blake Daniels and Mr. Powell, along with a lot of other staff members who put a good bit of time into making sure that we have a detailed budget. I believe it's over $90 million this year. Mr. Powell, would you provide the first reading of this ordinance, please?
Yes. Give me just one second. This is ordinance number 2504, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to provide for the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 operating budget for the city of Dublin to update the position and classification schedule for employees of the city, set a criteria for the city's retention incentive, adopt a five-year capital improvement plan for the city to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. And the first two sections of the ordinance, section one deals with revenues and section two deals with expenses and both total $90,039,104.
All right. Thank you. That is the first reading of the ordinance. There will be a second reading of the ordinance and a public hearing to receive public comment on the ordinance.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Would you let the public know who's on the finance committee, please?
Yes, Ms. Powell.
Sure. That's Councilman Brown, Councilman Chris Smith, and Councilman Mascara.
Thank you.
Yeah. And just the way our process works is that staff creates a draft budget. They take it to the finance committee. The finance committee spends most of a day going through all the items of it. Particular things that may have some question of whether we intend to spend a little more money or a little less money on some item get discussed through the finance committee. The finance committee then makes a recommendation to the full council. The full council then has a public workshop, which we had in this room with press here and public here, where we go through the entire budget and go through the finance committee's recommendations and ultimately decide what the final budget looks like before it goes to ordinance. So that's the process. And once it gets to this point where we have this proposed budget, we do a first reading to let the public know that this is how we intend to spend the money and what revenues we intend to collect. Then we have a second reading of the ordinance with receiving public comment. And then and only after we have finished this complete process do we actually adopt the ordinance. The budget is really the centerpiece of all the work that happens in the city. It tells us what we're spending money on, what we're charging for things. It reflects the priorities that we have as a town and as council members. And it is adopted through a long, transparent, public process.
And can the public see this before we actually vote on it? Somewhere online?
It is not online, but they can, I mean, the complete budget is not online, but there can come in requests from the clerk's office, any document from the city they would like to look at. We'll be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
It's published, we approve it.
Yeah. And I will say that copies were provided and offered to the press, along with the memo from staff outlining the particular issues in the budget. And I believe that that was reported in the Courier Herald.
About a week ago.
About a week ago, a large write-up indicating what the priorities were reflected in the budget.
Yeah. And I should mention, the upcoming year budget does include continued investment in our city parks, traffic calming, and other road improvements, facility renovations, which have been ongoing since this council was elected, utility infrastructure improvements, and it also includes a general wage adjustment for city employees.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Councilman Godfrey. Any other comments? We have no other comments. I do want to say that the public is invited to make public comment on Thursday, June 5th at 5:30 PM. That will be the public meeting, the hearing on this ordinance. That's Thursday, June 5th at 5:30.
At Bank of Dudley, we're your community, your bank. And with seven branches to serve you, there's a Bank of Dudley close by. And there's a familiar face close by. The same familiar faces that you've seen for many years. The same people that you've grown to trust, because that's what community banking is all about. Seven branches, local people, local decisions, local banking. That's the Bank of Dudley, serving our community since 1905.
When the acres add up, so does the work. The Kubota L-02 series is ready for it. Part of the number one rated tractor brand for durability and owner experience, it features powerful, dependable Kubota diesel engines, performance matched attachments, and the versatility to get the job done right.
Take advantage of Midstate Tractor's Orange Days with 0% financing, zero down for 84 months, right now, on select Kubota L-series tractors.
We'll now move to item number five on the agenda, which is a first reading of an ordinance to amend the water and sewer rates for the city of Dublin. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2504, an ordinance amending section 24-38, 2439, and 2472 of chapter 24, which is entitled Utilities. Code of Ordinances, City of Dublin, Georgia. And the effect of this ordinance is a 20 cent increase, well, a 40 cent increase in the base rate, which includes the first 2,000 gallons of water on both the water and sewer side, as well as a 20 cent per thousand gallon increase in the consumption rate for the upcoming year. And this would take effect on July the 10th and last through July the 3rd, 2026.
All right. So this is the first reading of the ordinance. And just to be, for full transparency, a typical residential customer may use 9,000 gallons of water in a month, and this ordinance would increase that by about $1.50 for water and about $1.50 for sewer. So it's a relatively minor increase, and this is what we do pretty much on an annual basis to keep up with increased operating expenses. We'll now move to item number six on the agenda. Well, I should say, I think I am required to say that this was a first reading of the ordinance. There will be a second reading and a public hearing on this ordinance on Thursday, June 5th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. So the public is invited to make any comment that they would like on Thursday, June 5th at 5:30 PM. We'll now move to item number six on the agenda. This is the second reading in a public hearing on an ordinance prohibiting the establishment of new vape shops within the city limits. Mr. Powell, if you could provide the second reading and then we will open the public hearing.
This is ordinance 2503, an ordinance by the mayor and city council of the city of Dublin, Georgia, to prohibit the establishment of new vape shops within the corporate limits of the city of Dublin to provide for severability, to repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to provide an adoption and effective date and for other lawful purposes. Just to give a little background information, due to public health concerns, as well as concerns about the effects of the vast availability and the rapid rate at which vape shops have opened in town, the council has got this ordinance to consider for adoption today, which would prohibit any further new vape shops being established. And those are defined as a retail establishment where 25% or more of the floor space, inventory, or gross revenue is derived from the sale, display, or distribution of vapor products, including but not limited to electronic cigarettes, vape pens, e-liquids, or related accessories. It also prohibits if a vape shop closes and is closed for 90 days or more, that it would not be able to reopen. And there's some other provisions in there. Existing vape shops are grandfathered in, but again, if they close and don't operate for 90 days, then they would not be able to reopen.
All right. So that was the second reading and explanation of the ordinance. At this time, we will close our city council meeting and open this meeting for public comment on this proposed ordinance. I will say that we received public comment at our last meeting, even though it was not an official meeting of council due to a lack of quorum. We did receive the comments at the prior meeting, and those are in the record for consideration by council. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak regarding this ordinance? All right. Last opportunity. All right. So we have had a full opportunity for public comment. We've received no additional public comment at this time, so we'll close the public hearing and turn this matter over to council for action. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the ordinance from Councilman Jones. We have a second from Councilman Brown. This time, is there any discussion on the ordinance now that has received a second? If there's no-
Mr. Mayor, will you give some just overview of what's happening if we approve this, so people understand it better?
Well, I think that the council has the right to regulate businesses in the interest of public health. And I think that everyone recognizes, and this is whether you're a public health official, a school official, and I see that we have our superintendent of schools here today, Dr. Williams, if you work in public health, even if you're just a parent or anyone in the community, you understand the concerns that surround vaping. About one-fourth of high school students who vape use it for marijuana. The vape materials are easily modified to put illegal substances in it. The substances that are sold have highly variable chemical components, some of which are potentially dangerous, almost all of which are highly addictive. It's not an easy type of shop to regulate. And the liquids that are in them can cause serious lung and respiratory damage and cardiovascular damage, and they're especially dangerous to young people. In addition to that, just from a public point of view, having these shops come up on every corner of town is just, is a tremendous amount of access to it, and it becomes difficult for the police to regulate it when we have so many of those type of shops. So we have established that there is a public health concern concerning the vape shops in our town. And the public, through its government, has a right to respond to those concerns. We have been advised by legal counsel that this is something that is done in other communities, and we, I believe that this council believes it's appropriate to do it for our town as well, in the interest of public health, and especially to protect young people from the dangers of this vaping. The way that this ordinance works is that we understand that there are business people who have relied on the business licenses that they have to open these shops and make investments. And we want to make sure that that is honored at least, because at the time that they opened those shops, there was nothing wrong with doing it, there was no law against it. So this ordinance allows anyone who has an existing vape shop to continue in its operation. What it says, though, is if you want to open a new shop, that that's not going to be permitted within the city limits of Dublin. This council is saying, no new vape shops within the city. If you have an existing shop and it's owned by an LLC, then the ownership of that LLC can change, but the ownership of the vape store itself cannot change. So that if you lose your lease or if you go out of business, nobody else can come in and restart it under a different name, under a different business. We're just not going to issue any new business licenses to new vape shops in the city of Dublin. So is that, does that provide the background that you requested, Mr. Mascara?
And also the 25% thing to, just so people understand that.
Yeah. All right. Any other?
Well, I got something to say. I mean, I'm pretty much opposed to this because I think we need more information, because once we close vape shops, I mean, we're going to talk about a ton of convenience stores coming in and pretty much putting all vapes in convenience stores. If you go in Scottsdale neighborhood now, the BP over there is half a vape shop, but they have a gas station.
Right.
So I mean, I think we need more information on how to control that, because you're going to have people just open up a store or gas station and putting vapes in all the stores. It's happening now.
And I should say that this ordinance says that if you have 25% or more of your floor space or retail sales is vape, then it's not permitted. So this is really aimed at vape shops, at stores that are aimed at vape products. So it's got to be 75% more of the retail sales or floor space for non-vape products for it to-
25%.
Then you can, yep. Any other points?
So what you're saying is that-
25% of revenue, if a convenience store generates 25% of revenue from-
Revenue or space.
Both.
Yes.
It says floor space, inventory.
Inventory or revenue. So 25% of any one of those things would make it a vape shop.
That's right.
Shoot, we got a whole lot of vape shops there. Those, I'm like, yeah, I'm like, yeah, I'm like, Ms. Smith, Councilman Smith, there's a lot of convenience stores that even the ones that's opening up, we need to, because that's what they're doing, they're opening up as a convenience store.
But then they turn it around.
Yeah, you turn it in and half of the store is a vape shop.
Yeah.
So we need to start looking at these convenience stores as they open up too.
All right. So at this point, do we have any further comments by council members? We do have a motion and a second, so we will have a vote, but this is, any other discussion by council members? Has everybody been able to say their piece?
Is there a way for us to regulate that with the new convenience stores opening? I'm just asking.
Yeah. I mean, if they open up as a convenience store and it turns out that they, and they have requested permitting, you know, to open before or after this has been passed, then if it turns out they start operating as a vape shop by default, then we would be authorized to go in and tell them either they have to reduce their vape percentage, if it's inventory or sales or whatever that may be, or floor space, or else they need to shut down. We could revoke their occupational certificate for non-compliance with the ordinance.
Just protect this.
All right. Any other questions for staff regarding this?
But ones that are in existence now, like if there's a service station out there now that has more than 25% of vape, they would be a vape shop that's in existence.
I know a couple of them about to open. I do believe that's what they're about to do.
Maybe a timing issue with the permitting.
Yeah.
All right. So this will apply to new occupational permits issued after today's date.
Or it change hands, or it change ownership.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And give us regulation on existing, correct?
Excuse me?
So will we have, will we have regulation on existing with this ordinance?
Only if they change ownership, if they stop operating for 90 days, or if they try to relocate to another-
I think what you're asking is if you got a convenience store that's got convenience license, but we know that their inventory, all of this falls underneath the vape.
They're already a vape store.
They're already a vape shop.
Yeah.
But they're licensed for a convenience store.
There's no occupation certificate for a vape shop.
There's nothing we could do with them because they've already established themselves as a-
Any retail establishment that is defined, regardless of what their name is, is defined as a vape shop, which is 25, you know, more than 25%, that is presently operational and presently has an occupational certificate, can continue to operate until those things in the grandfather section occur, change in ownership. But they have to be in operation. That is correct. They have to be existing and operational now. Right.
Okay.
So like a service station right now that doesn't have much or any vape product, if they try to increase that and then fall within this definition, we could then shut that down.
Okay. Gotcha.
All right. Those were a lot of great questions. Any other questions or comments? Appreciate the work that our city attorney, Mr. Groover, has done on this, as well as our staff attorney, Mr. Poole. Thank you for your work in putting this ordinance together. If there are no other questions or comments, at this time, we'll have a vote. We'll have a roll call vote on this. Our clerk, Heather Browning, will call the roll, please.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
No.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right. I want to thank everyone for the civil discussion that we've had regarding this issue and hope that this ordinance provides a benefit to our community.
I'm Brian Baysmore, president and CEO of Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County. We would like to invite you to come by and experience a welcoming banking environment. Come by today and have a cup of coffee and let us talk with you about our many products, savings accounts, checking accounts, CDs, and our many loans. You're more than just a number to us, you're family. Come by today. Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County, member FDIC and equal housing lender.
Midstate Pools and Spas is Middle Georgia's most trusted pool builder. Whether it's in-ground or above, you can count on Midstate Pools and Spas for all your pool needs, including outdoor furniture. From pool chairs to patio furniture, Midstate Pools and Spas carries telescope and Polly's Island. So call or come in today to Midstate Pools and Spas. Now open Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturday, 9 to 1.
We'll now move to item number seven on our agenda, which is discussion and action on a resolution to adopt an agreement with the archway partnership. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2524, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council, approving a memorandum of understanding with Lawrence County, the University System of Georgia, by and on behalf of the University of Georgia, and the Office of the Vice President for Public Service and Outreach for the development, implementation, and continuation of Dublin Lawrence County Archway Partnership, to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. The council approved us entering into this agreement with UGA and Lawrence County to provide for the local archway program last year. This is an agreement that is required to be renewed each year of its existence. The city's obligation is half of the cost of that, which is $35,000, which goes to the program, and a portion of both our contribution and Lawrence County has the other half of that. Also goes towards any of the projects that we're working on. We have some money that's available to use in case a third party is needed to provide some resources. But the archway program provides UGA's resources to our local community as it may be needed to help with various projects or addressing various issues that the community may have. Throughout the past years, I know they've done several outreach events to get input from the community. We've talked with various people who are representative of city council, the county commissioners, and other local entities, the school board, and both the city and county school board. And we've identified some areas that we'd like to address. There are some particular issues that we're trying to address now and see what resources are available through UGA, and I'm hopeful that they're able to deliver on those. Just over the past year, though, they have already used some of their landscape architect students to help us with some lighting and landscape plans for Hillburn Park. And they've done a couple of other projects with us just locally on kind of a small scale. So we've already been able to see some of the benefit of being a part of the archway program. They also have put us in touch with their telecom and cybersecurity team, and they have been working with the city and Mr. Jefferson on our cybersecurity side of things for the city. So it's been a positive program. I'm looking forward to the good things we can do in the years to come.
Okay. So each year, we have to approve this allocation. And I know that when we first approved it, council members wanted to make sure that we were getting a benefit from the money that we were spending. According to the reports I've received, that they have started off strong and that we hope within this next year, we'll start seeing some product from that that will be basically very cost-effective for the community because they're leveraging the resources of the University of Georgia on all these different projects that we have. So at this time, this does require a motion and approval in order to have this agreement signed. So do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Godfrey to approve the agreement for the archway partnership. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. All right. We'll now move to item number eight on the agenda, which is action on a resolution to approve the O'Conne Fall Line Technical College to provide education services, and that's primarily GED programs, at the property owned by the city. Mr. Powell.
This is 25, excuse me, Resolution 2525. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, Georgia, to accept and approve the terms of a memorandum of understanding with O'Conne Fall Line Technical College to provide adult educational resources at the location of 511 Charles Manning Senior Way, Dublin, Georgia, to authorize the mayor to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. This is the facility that's right adjacent to the O'Conne gym. It's known as the O'Conne Cultural Center. And OFCC has operated an adult education, as well as workplace literacy, GED program, and digital literacy skills at that location for several years now. Each year, they ask that we have an agreement in place, and OFCC requires an agreement be in place with the local government that owns the facility so they can operate there. It's been very successful and beneficial to the community. And just so the public knows, they do have, you know, resources available there if you're interested in that. If you need contact information, you can contact either O'Conne Fall Line Technical College, or you can reach out to us here at the city, and we'll be glad to put you in contact with the appropriate people. So this is a resolution that will authorize the contract to be in place.
All right. So appreciate the explanation. I know that we've got a member of the O'Conne High School Alumni Association here, and I know that you use the O'Conne Cultural Center as well, and it's great to have that resource available for the community to provide GED classes there. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman, was that Smith, from Councilman Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. We'll now move to item number nine on the agenda, which is a work detail for Riverview Golf Course. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2526, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council, approving a contract with the Georgia Department of Corrections for the services of a work detail for the city of Dublin, to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, set an effective- to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. This is an agreement that we have each year. The Department of Corrections sends out verification that we want to continue using the work detail. They've been very beneficial to the city down at Riverview Golf Course. They provide a maximum of 10 workers and one officer for, for typically four days during the week. And the contract amount this year is $27,124, $124.90, which is just above the $24,000 figure it was last year. We do recommend that the council approve this. The term for this would be consistent with the fiscal year on July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
Did you say that? What's the minimum amount they can send us?
They don't, they won't guarantee you a minimum. That's the problem.
Yeah, that's the problem. Looking at, you said something about, you know, they sent the crew out, and then they worked, got working a little hard, and then they show up the next day.
Well, not, it's not that they didn't show up at all. Some of them did. They just didn't have as many as they had on the first day.
That's what I'm saying.
But it ebbs and flows. They will not guarantee you a number of, I've been through this with them a number of times. I've even actually, back when I was still city attorney, tried to get them to change the, there's some issues with their agreement altogether. But they, it's a standard agreement that they use statewide. They will not make any modification to it whatsoever. And they do, you know, for the, for what we're paying for, it's a, it's a good benefit to Riverview Golf Course for some labor. And they are being used, so.
It does say we're credited for the days that they do not come. Is that correct?
Well, we get credit for when they don't come at all.
Right.
They send one person. You're getting credit for, you're getting charged for that one person showing up.
I haven't heard that that's been an issue so much recently, Councilman Jones. I know in the past, there have been times when the, the number of inmates has been, and these are, these are people coming from Trutland Probation Detention Center, I could say. And, you know, with any probation detention center, there's the amount of people that are there and how long they stay there is a lot. The time spent in a probation detention center is capped at 180 days, I believe, if that's still consistent from my prosecution days. But it is, so the inmates that are actually there and available changes faster than the normal prison system. But I haven't had any complaints about the number of people they've been sending recently, but I can double check on that and let you know. I think we've been satisfied with the number of inmates they've been sending recently.
All right. Any additional questions regarding this? All right. If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agreement for, with the Department of Corrections from Councilman Smith. We have a second from Councilman Colby. Is that correct?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. So that will be a six, one, a five, a five, one vote there. But the agreement is approved.
Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed Amana equipment dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and cooling unit. Allen services all brands, and with the purchase of a new Amana, offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Call Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff at Allen's Heating and Cooling. Your Amana dealer. Amana lasts and lasts and lasts.
Hi, Dublin and Lawrence County. My name is Michael Willis, and I'm here with Dublin Pigly Wiggly. Check out our great savings and stop by Pigly Wiggly, where you'll find the freshest fruits and vegetables along with fresh-cut pork, chicken, and beef. Remember, Pigly Wiggly is Lawrence County Certified Angus Beef Dealer. Pigly Wiggly reminds you to shop with us.
Item number 10 on the agenda is discussion action on a resolution regarding a memorandum for Dublin's classic Main Street designation with the Department of Community Affairs. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2527, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin, Georgia, to accept and approve the terms of a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, Office of Downtown Development, DCA, the local Main Street Program Board of Directors, and the Downtown Manager of Dublin to maintain the city's, Georgia exceptional Main Street city designation, to authorize the mayor to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Every three years, I think it is, right, Glenda, we have an in-person visit from folks from DCA, and our designation is determined at that, whenever they come and do that in-person meeting. That is set to happen again in January of 2026. Right now, we are designated as a Georgia exceptional Main Street, and we have, do everything that we're required to do in order to maintain that status. Ms. Glenda Berry is our executive director of the Development Authority, and also serves as our Main Street program manager. And she does a good job with that, and it's a pleasure working with her. And we're looking forward to getting our GEMS designation back in January of 2026. But this agreement is required for us to have the benefits and the resources that DCA provides us for being a Georgia exceptional Main Street.
Okay. Any questions regarding this? I think this is something that's been done over the years through the Department of Community Affairs and our Downtown Development Authority. If there's no discussion, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Let's move on to item number 11, which is discussion action on surplus items. Mr. Powell, surplus items.
We have a number of items for council's consideration for surplus, a couple of lawnmowers, and several water meters that have been removed from our system, but may be beneficial to some other. There they are.
All right. Do we have a motion on surplus?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara, a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Those items are declared surplus. We have an item number 12, which has been added to the agenda. That is a motion to transfer property to the Dublin City School System. That property is identified as .65 acres, located next to the Dublin Fire Station. It's identified in a plat prepared by Daniel Flanders on June the 4th, 2022. Council members have been provided plat. The fire department has confirmed that they do not need that space, that it was probably actually an error, I think. Wasn't the property swapped long ago?
Well, it was, it was under a lease, including the fire station to the school, so yeah.
So this is, this is cleaning up some real estate legal issues that have, that were handed down to us from years ago. And our understanding is that this is property that has been used by the Board of Education, and they have additional plans for it, is not needed by our fire department, has never been used by our fire department. So this would be a motion to transfer that property to the city school system. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Mascara, a second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion on the motion? Having no discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I'll tell the fire department they've got less grass to cut now.
All right. Okay. At this time, we will have citizens' comments, and we'll have council comments, but will not adjourn the meeting. We will go into executive session at the end of the comment period to discuss potential litigation.
And real estate.
And real, and real estate. So, but at this time, we will have citizens' comments. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to make comments? All right. And this is for everyone who likes to, would like to have a public comment today. Heather Browning, our clerk, keeps a three-minute comment period. And at the beginning of the comment period, please state your name, and we'd love to hear your comments. And everybody knows you, Dr. Williams.
Good day to Mayor and Council, Fred Williams, Superintendent of Dublin City Schools. And Mama always said, when somebody been kind to you, you ought to say thank you. And so on behalf of our students, our staff, and the coaches and Board of Education, we want to thank you for transferring the property. We're super excited also about the partnership. We've been working very hard with Ms. Dorothy Rosier and Ms. Brown at the library on the partnership concerning the O'Conne Alumni Association annuals, as well as Dublin High School digitizing those. And so we want to thank you for that, that partnership as well. And also want to tip the cap to Councilman Jones, who has been working tirelessly with our green reading machine in the background on behalf of the city and the library. And so we're excited that we have that program up and running. We will be taking the green machine. Our students have digital library cards. It's called a play card. And so we want you to encourage every child in our city to be a reader this summer. And the bus will go around. We'll have library personnel on the green machine, and they're able to check out books on the green machine. So we're super excited about that. And again, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Mr. Davis?
Jerry Davis, 111 Hedges Way in Dublin. And I do want to thank you all for approving the Resolution 2520, the 2525, the memorandum of understanding with O'Conne Fall Line Technical College to continue to utilize that facility. The O'Conne Alumni Association, like the mayor said, we still utilize it, and we got a lot of our memorabilia in there. And at the same, that greetings to the mayor and the council. Second item that I wanted to bring to your attention. I'm a member of the Hedges Neighborhood Association. That's near the corner of Country Club and Parker Dairy Road. And we have several potholes in that area. And a portion of the street is not level in that when it rains a lot, a puddle of the water just sits in the road for a few days, a day or two afterwards. And I would like for someone to come to take a look at that. Second item that I wanted to mention is, I had spoke with Councilman Brown and Commissioner Jimmy Rogers about maybe putting some speed breakers on the portion of Parker Dairy Road where the subdivision is. A lot of us in the neighborhood, we do a circle of motion of walking around the community, our neighborhood, Hedges Way and Hedges Row, and a portion of it, we are walking on Parker Dairy Road. And we've noticed where a lot of the, the residents are speeding on that particular road. So I would ask for some consideration. I know someone mentioned that we were going to do a speed count, and I hope you all are in the process of doing that now because that would be a great benefit to us if we could get some speed breakers. And, and I just want to say thank you all very much and for Heather and all of the other employees that's been of assistance to us. And we are going to have, we're going to have our president coming, National Alumni Association President coming for our annual scholarship banquet for Fort Valley State University. That's the Dublin Lawrence chapter. And we would appreciate any novelty gifts that we all, we might can get from the city to present that to that, to the president at that time. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Jerry Davis. A question. Mr. Jerome Pullen called me about this speed cushion. So is it for Parker Dairy Road, or is it for Hedges Way?
It's for Parker Dairy Row.
Okay.
One and the same. Yes, okay.
All right. Thank you for those comments, and we'll look into the, to the speed bumps issue. Is Parker Dairy Road in the city? A portion of it is.
No, part of it is.
Yeah, part of it is. Yeah.
The part they stay on is.
Just making, I know you said that you contacted your county commissioner too, so we may work together with them on that because that, that road is used by county residents probably as much as city residents or more.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, are the potholes you're talking about in the neighborhood or on Parker Dairy?
One of them is right there in the, at the entrance of the Hedges, the subdivision. And some of them are right there inside the, inside our neighborhood. But, but the potholes, both the entrances, that's what mainly the potholes are. But where the road need to be leveled is inside the neighborhood. So you could contact me or Philip Rosier. He's the Neighborhood Association President. But you got my contact information, and that would be the.
All right. Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
If you're wondering when the best time to buy a new car is, it's right now. Hi, this is Don Carswell, Dublin Nissan in Dublin, Georgia. And the best day to buy a new car is every day. So whether you're looking at the all-new Murano, a brand-new 2025 Versa, or you're looking for a great deal on a Z, we have all the choices here at Dublin Nissan every day. And now's the time to take advantage of all-new discounted pricing on new roads and pathfinders. We sell cars well every day at Dublin Nissan.
You ready to meet the latest addition to the family? The money you save us with auto owners help make it all possible.
It really is the best thing that's ever happened to me.
Excuse me?
Third best thing.
Third best thing.
Auto Owners offers discounts for life, home, car, and business insurance because they think the more you protect, the more you should save. That's simple human sense.
Ask Curry Maffet Insurance in Dublin and Augusta if auto owners make sense for you.
Yes.
Hello, good evening, council members. I'm Empress Coats. I know some of your faces. I know you, Mayor Kite, you came to the political forum we hosted four years ago. Benny, you're always supportive. Chris, you always come and support. For those who don't know me, I'm co-founder of Culture Shock of Dublin Incorporated. And I just wanted to make a general statement about what I've been seeing over the last four years from our public servants and community representatives as far as engagement goes, community engagement goes. I came in and several people did not recognize me, did not know my face. Although just two short weeks ago, we had a call-to-action community meeting. Thank you for coming, Benny. There were prominent people from the community that was there, and we talk about how we prioritize our youth in this city. I am disappointed, to say the least, with where we are in prioritizing our youth. I'll be back on June 5th to talk more about those budgeting agendas and things. But something that's been tabled that I haven't heard about in a while is the State of Stub Parks gym. And right now, that gym is occupied. Every day of operation, I go up there and I observe. And that's the position I have played over the past four years for some of you who are new to the seats. I've been observing, observing, seeing what's going on. I do not think that you can properly represent a community that you are afraid of, that you are ashamed of, and that you do not engage in on a regular basis. That gym, the O'Conne Gym, is now under construction. So Stub's Gym is in constant usage by at-risk youth. It's deplorable. There's mold, there's flooding, there's all type of issues that goes on. I go in there and I sit, and I talk with the kids. The ventilation is poor. The, I don't know if it's asbestos or mold on the, on the walls. But then I take my daughter to cities like Dudley, and they have full renovations. They have technology in those gyms, and it just makes me sad. So I will be back on June 5th to go more in-depth about some of the notes that I've taken. But I just want to know, in the past 12 months, city councilwomen, men, and mayor, how have you been engaging with, with the underprivileged, at-risk, at-risk communities, our youth? Because our city is in need right now. How have you been engaging? And before we start going into beautification, which is a vital part of restoration and pride in the city? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
May I ask her one question about the meeting that you all had? I didn't know about the meeting, so I called Councilman Chris Smith and asked him. He did not know. He said his brother, he was gonna call his brother to ask him about the meeting. So after that, he called me back and said you all were having a meeting. So how did the information get put out? Because I didn't know.
It got put out via social media. It got put out word of mouth, Facebook. You're there a lot. And I actually got word that you made a comment that it would be political suicide to attend. So I'm not sure if you did or did not get the information. But we're there, and we, and we have presence. And there will be another meeting on the 2nd, so I'll make sure that you guys get it. I also had a conversation and a personal invite with Glenda Berry. Glenda Berry that day. And Channel 13 was there. And they called personally to invite and see if representatives would be there. So somebody should have notified you. And I'm, I'm sorry you didn't get that information in time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other citizens' comments?
Nope.
All right. With no other citizens' comments, Mr. Groover, any comments this afternoon? All right. Mr. Brown?
No, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Mr. Jones?
Oh, we got quick. Thank you, Mr. Heather.
Do what?
Heather.
I'll get back.
Okay. Throw me out. Thank you, Mr. Like to remind everybody that, as Dr. Weeden stated, we are doing a summer reading program in conjunction with the school, Dublin City School, the park, I'm trying to park, Dublin Lawrence County Recreation Department and the library. So I think we've pinned out flyers. We're putting them out. So if you need a flyer, you see me. I posted on Facebook. So it's out there, the qualification, which you do first. First, most important thing you do is sign up for the library's summer reading program. If you use sign up for the summer library reading program, they get the, everything they need right there. They got, they get everything. But you have to sign up to qualify with the summer reading program. They will have everything there. And I'm super excited about what's happening with our young people with the summer, with the reading, doing this reading, getting the reading out to them, hoping they can read. And partnering with the school, with the mobile library. That is very important to eliminate excuses for kids who have not been able to read because they can't get to the library. Also, I think as council, we need to also, listening to what Mr. Councilman Smith was saying, we may need to look at limiting our convenience stores also. A lot of convenience stores are popping up and that's what they're doing. And we're not regulating them alone with the machines that they are doing. So we need to probably look at that because a lot of stuff is going on. That's what, I mean, he was right head on with that. They opened up, they stated gonna do one thing. I know one shut down, stopped selling, he stopped selling food and turned that portion of his store straight into a vape shop. And so that's, that'll let you know if you stop selling food. When people coming in eating, they know people love to eat. So that's, so I agree. Maybe also want to look at the ordinance of stopping convenience stores coming in with that. And also I would like for us to look at our archway program. And I mean, we are doing wonderful things with them, but I think so, but we are not even touching the spirit there. We just pick, 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 picking with them. Let's get into the meat. I love for council to get into the meat and really use archway to do a lot of things in our community that change. I've heard and talked to council members, mayor councilmen of other cities. They didn't just pick. They got in and let them, the engineering got in and did a whole lot with them and saved the city a lot of money, did some drawings for them and did some stuff and saved the city money. So let's look at doing that and making sure all the council is involved and engaged with that because I have been to archway, I have been contacted with anybody representative. I don't need anybody writing down anything about what I say. I want a person to talk to the archway people myself. They say they're gonna contact council. I have not been contacted by anybody from archway to see what my ideas and what I want and what. Hey, so I would love for that to happen. Whoever can make that happen, please make that happen. So not just certain council members are talking with them. I believe that all council members need to be involved in talking with that because we all have different ideas and see different things, see things different. And I hope that the vape thing, I hope everyone's happy with how that went. I know may have some kinks in that, but I think we went, made a big step towards making our community safer and healthier. And thank you everyone for coming. I thank all our employees for all that they do.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Godfrey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just like to thank everybody for coming out. Thank you for your citizen concerns. Also, we want to, I want to personally thank all the veterans who served our country. And I hope everybody have a safe Memorial Day weekend. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby?
Yeah. So I want to thank staff, Blake Daniels, and others on our finance committee who have come up with a physically responsible budget for this upcoming year. I'm grateful for staff that leads us in those directions and for our finance committee that takes a deeper dive. I also am excited about the reduced availability of vape and vape substances within our community. I think this is an important step towards public health in protection of our youth and adults. I want to say that, just like Benny, reiterate what Benny said about our summer reading program and the partnership with Southern Pines Water Park. Very excited that every youth within our community has an opportunity to earn a free water park pass, not only for themselves, but also for their family members to come out and enjoy it for the day. So encourage them to utilize that summer reading program like Benny said. And there's an additional way that you can volunteer with at-risk youth within our community. For the past two years, I have been volunteer coordinator with, for a program for, called Read to Lead. Read to Lead is a weekly mentoring program with at-risk and low-performing youth within our Dublin City School System. We've been at Suzy Dashar and Hillcrest Elementary every single week with over 73 volunteers, serving over 60 students on a weekly basis, and bringing mentors and readers into the school system to help those low-performing students achieve their literacy goals. I'm excited to say that over this past year, Hillcrest Elementary School has improved over 10% in their literacy rates for their third grade students. So we're really excited and proud of those achievements for our students and for our school systems. And I'm so, again, thankful for our community who steps up to the plate consistently to solve issues like literacy and like these other issues. So thank you so much for coming out today.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Councilman Smith, any comments?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments everyone has made. And thank you for the comments that were made by the citizens. But I want to piggyback off of what was said about our youth in Stubb Gym. I don't know if it has to be said 20 times, but Stubb's Park is a safe haven for our kids, especially in that community.
Yes.
And I mean, we can do a lot of programs, but in schools, and schools' kids are safe. The main thing happens when they get out of school, when there's no one there to watch, nowhere to go. Stubb's has been a safe haven for a lot of kids to stay out of, stay out of trouble and, and stay out of all kind of problems. So we most definitely need to bring Stubb's Park Gym back on the table because it's most definitely in that neighborhood and that area a safe haven for kids to stay out of trouble. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Councilman Mascara?
I just want to say thank you for every, to everyone for coming out. Glad we can get everything squared away for you guys, for Dr. Williams. To the young lady from Culture Shock, I want you to know that we are, I think everybody on this council is here and willing. And I think that sometimes how we get communicated to, and I think you will get a better response if your intent is for us to be involved, if you contact Jamie with Josh's office and let us know what's going on, and we'll be notified. Because we don't all, no offense, I've been to your events two or three times, but I've never been to a meeting. I, I did not know. I did not know that you, your expectation was that we would come to them as a council. So if that's something that you prioritize, I think that it would be beneficial for you, now that you've told us, to let Josh's office know that your expectation is that we're there in support of your endeavors. Because if you don't ask us, we don't, we don't know. Does that make sense?
It was the first meeting and thank you for that. I don't think it was just that.
I'm sorry. If y'all can, we have to, this is.
Sorry. I just, I just wanted to address that.
Yeah. And y'all, y'all can carry on offline after the meeting. But at this time, it's council comments.
Yeah. And I'm, and my whole premise of that is that if you come here and voice what your expectations are there, we have a better likelihood of addressing them than if people come or don't, or they go to Facebook before they come to us. That's what these meetings are for and why we open it up to citizens' comments. And so we don't do a good job unless we understand your need.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. Mr. Powell, any comments?
She's not here, but I do want to wish congratulations to our favorite citizen that comes in typically is Ms. Jacqueline Juddon Wright.
J. Dub.
Who, in case y'all didn't know, she purchased and closed on a new home here in Dublin yesterday, I believe it was. And so congratulations to Ms. Wright. I'm sure you're listening.
Congratulations.
All right. All right. So at this time, we have to do some record-keeping to go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate and potential litigation. I want to highlight for a second our city clerk, Heather Browning. Ms. Browning is the person who sits behind the desk and makes it all work for us. And a lot of times, it's, it's easy to, to just see the people who are sitting up here, but it's the people down there who make this town work. And Ms. Browning is our city clerk, is, is one of those people. For example, now she has prepared all these forms that are legally required for us to go into executive sessions. We will, we will sign affidavits and documents. After this meeting is over, she and I will meet for probably another 15 to 45 minutes going and signing contracts and ordinances and resolutions. If you've ever been to the city clerk's office, there's a whole vault of minutes of the city of Dublin that go back to the 1800s. And she is the keeper of records. So I just want to say thank you for all that you do that's behind the scenes. And if, do you have any comments today? Okay. With that, all right. With that, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now adjourn to executive session.